I'll grab some of my red. They'll be in there.
Oh, please do.
That's the best assistant you have. Well, you have to say. Is that thirty? Maybe ten. It doesn't go past ten. All right, who's that? Probably should bring him.
And I'm going to stop it.
He probably needs my approval.
Oh, why?
That's like.
I don't have why.
Um.
Yeah, that's it.
Did you hear the word?
I'm probably a lot more done.
It's not a bad idea with a book. Little bit of mouth in places.
That's how they control, um, frequency and health. It's a separate.
Ladies, welcome. Let's stand for our plan. Attention, salute. Pledge allegiance and flag that the United States of America is a republic where we stand, a nation under oath, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm Mo Bledsoe. Thank you very much. I'm Robert, having trouble updating. Welcome to our monthly meeting. We are here to accomplish the business of school for the sake of our students. We have a lot of time for a public comment. After all of our agenda items have been discussed, I'll be limiting you to three minutes. So prepare yourself in your comments for that. If you have more than three minutes worth of material, you can certainly leave something for the board to review. If you have questions about things that go on during the meeting, you can always address those to your board member or school administrator once the meeting's adjourned. Thank you for coming. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda for this year?
No.
The way the motion was proven, there's a second. Second must be removed. Any comment? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? No. Is our student representative here? I don't see her.
No, she sends her regards. She could not be here tonight.
Okay. Well, she's usually very entertaining and informational, and she's missed. Because wow. She does a phenomenal job.
The audience also missed.
They agree? Yeah, you missed out. She does a phenomenal job representing the student body.
Four pages of information.
Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from March 11th and March 18th of everybody's work session? I have a motion committee. Who is her second? Second, Mr. Grove. Any comment? All in favor of adoption? I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Mr. Ward. Mr. Grove, have you had a chance to review the bills?
I have, and we are sitting at right at seventy-five percent where we're supposed to be.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
A motion, Ms. Bynum. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rube. And all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Mr. Ward, Dr. Grimsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Jody Place to come to the podium. Every year in April is the approval process for Career and Technical Education Annual Plan. There have been quite a few updates this year and also from the State Department, as well as some of the requirements that public schools have to meet in career and technical education. So Ms. Jody Place is our, not only our Assistant Principal, but is also our Career and Technical Education Director. So she will walk us through.
Can you bend that down?
She shouldn't be able to come down. Sorry. Stand right here.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. This presentation supplements the CTE Local Plan that we're submitting for approval tonight. We'll highlight enhancements in our programming alignment with the Virginia Department of Education's guidelines and how we're preparing our students with skills, credentials, and career awareness they need for success after high school. We've developed a CTE-specific program of studies which serves as both a course request tool and long-term planning guide for our students. Each course within the CTE Course of Studies is categorized by career cluster and pathway, which aligns directly with the VDOE's career cluster framework. This design is intended to help students understand how their coursework leads to real-world opportunities and ensures their academic planning supports for the future. Additionally, we've identified course prerequisites, particularly for programs that involve state-recognized credentials. This ensures students build strong foundations before moving into more advanced coursework. For example, students must take Introduction to Health and Medical Sciences before enrolling an emergency medical responder per internal planning and working with our CTE teachers, because VDOE does emphasize rigorous course sequencing. VDOE's structure for CTE programming revolves around seventeen career clusters and over eighty career pathways, each with aligned competencies, credentials, and potential career outcomes. We've adopted this model, mapping every CTE course into specific cluster and pathway. This framework helps students see the bigger picture of how their interest in coursework align with the job market needs and opportunities for further education or direct-to-work for success. We currently offer forty-four CTE courses with additional opportunities through Laurel Ridge Community Colleges, Future Educator Academy, and the Trades Academy. Importantly, despite any rumors you may have heard, there have been no reductions in programming and course offerings in our program of study, only growth in direct response to students' interests and VDOE's call for labor-market-aligned programming. VDOE promotes local division partnerships with regional academies and community colleges to expand student access to certifications, dual enrollment, and career training, exactly what we're accomplishing through these partnerships. The checks that you see on the graphic represent the career clusters we currently have courses available in, and hopefully, as you go forward, you'll see more check marks as we expand. We conducted a student interest survey in November of 2024, and programs like Criminal Justice, Cosmetology, and Veterinary Science stood out. These responses help us to plan course offerings, ensuring that what we provide is student-driven and responsive to local needs, as encouraged by the VDOE Program Quality Standards. A CTE advisory group met in the, um, to review the CTE Local Plan and in the development process. This group included school staff, parents, members of local business, community members, and community college representatives. The advisory group will continue to meet regularly and discuss programming data and needs, and student voice is a key part of this process as well. And so I would be remiss if I didn't introduce two CTE stars and two student voices that we have here with us tonight, Emma Arnold and Abigail Nicholas.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'm Emma Arnold. I'm the Rappahannock County FFA Chapter Vice President, and I'm honored to share how FFA has impacted in my life. FFA isn't just Future Farmers of America. It's a world of opportunities, from classroom learning to scholarships, and most importantly, a family that stands by you through everything. FFA has helped me discover who I am and what I want to pursue in my future. Through FFA, I found my passion and deep love for agriculture. This organization became my strength during one of the hardest times of my life, the loss of my uncle to me being. He always believed in my agriculture dreams and even gifted me a calf for my FFA SAE project. I've completed courses in equine science, Introduction to Animal Sciences, Small Animal Care, and I'm currently enrolled in Veterinary Science I and II. These studies have led to valuable certifications in equine management and evaluation fundamentals of animal sciences, and canine infant flea line CPR and first aid. By the end of this school year, I'll proudly become a certified veterinary assistant. These achievements open doors once I've, uh, once I've only dreamed of, like my kennel assistant internship last summer, where I gave over a hundred and twenty hours of pantheon experience. Reflecting on who I am today, I've seen how much FFA and our agriculture department have shaped my growth and achievements. And I am proud, and I proudly stand as a member of the Rappahannock County FFA Chapter. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Abigail Nicholas, and I serve as the President of the FFA Chapter. Equine science, I take, I have taken equine science, Small Animal Care, and I'm currently enrolled in Veterinary Science. I have, I just. I have a certification through Small Animal Care, Equine Science, and Veterinary Science, and I'm currently working towards my veterinary assistant, technician-assistant certification. And within these classes, they have given me a deeper understanding of the animal world and fueled my passion for working with animals. In equine science, I have learned about horse anatomy, behavior, and care, which have helped me understand the importance of proper nutrition and grooming. Small Animal Care has taught me how to handle and care for such pets as rabbits, guinea pigs, snakes, bearded jaguars, and much more. There's, their vet science, vet science has tied everything together, offering hands-on experiences to prepare me for the future in animal health with skills in first aid, anatomy, and diagnostic procedures. FFA has played a huge role in my, in shaping who I am today. Through FFA, I've developed leadership skills, gained confidence in public speaking, and made friendships that will last a lifetime. Through competitions, community service projects, and chapter meetings, I have helped, it has helped me step out of my comfort zone and grow as a person. It's given me a sense of purpose and belonging. It has also shown me the value of work, of hard work, responsibility, and service. My time in FFA has left me a long-lasting impact on my high school experience and will continue to influence my future in agriculture and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Emma and Abigail. As we go forward, I would just like to regularly highlight some of our CTE stars from the different clusters and pathways. These two young women are certainly role models, and we have so many more within CTE that we could bring before you, and I hope to do that as we go forward, have future opportunities to stand before you. This is just a sample from our program of studies, just so you can see how it is organized. Our program of study outlines the career cluster, which you can see, pathways, which is the next, the, for instance, I did Horticulture, so that's in Agriculture, Food and Natural Resource Cluster. It's within the Plant System Pathway. And then you can see the course descriptions that would include a prerequisite if there is one and how each course contributes to a larger learning sequence. We also provided grade-level scheduling information and guidance. For example, ninth graders must complete core subjects, English, Social Studies, Math, Science, and Health MBE. Those are required for all ninth graders, leaving only one to two elective slots for ninth graders. If they're going to be going for an Advanced Studies diploma, for instance, they would take and start a world language perhaps, so they may only have one additional opportunity to take an elective. So our ninth graders have fewer opportunities. So as you go forward, you'll see in contrast, as we get up to our seniors, some of them have up to five, sometimes even six, opportunities for electives within a variety of different areas, but certainly with the number we have in CTE, we hope they'll, they'll choose from that. We have also integrated sequential elective options, as you can see, I added core sequence options, because this is a VDOE requirement for graduation. Credential information as well, as every student earning a standard diploma must obtain a board-approved industry certification or license. So we're adding that and working with our teachers on what are the most accessible and related certifications for their courses that they're teaching. These updates ensure our offerings are graduation-aligned and forward-looking, helping students fulfill state requirements while also engaging in career-connected learning. In the process, right now, we are in the course, we have pretty much finished the course request process, and this shows our most requested CTE courses for next year in the order of the requests. Programs like welding, as you can see, Small Animal Care, Introduction to Culinary, Veterinary Science, and Introduction to Health and Medical Sciences. And again, you can now see a new course offering, Public Safety, reflects strong student interest and growing career fields. All of our courses are delivered through competency-based instructional model per VDOE best practices and are linked to industry-recognized credentials. We also support CTE student organizations. As you can see, we have FFA that is affiliated with our agriculture programs. For instance, for our culinary, that would be FCC LA. So each of our clusters have different student organizations that are associated with them, and they provide leadership development and competition opportunities that enhance learning outcomes and engagement. And in a number of these programs, I have Ms. Michelle Fincham here, who, a number of the courses she teaches are part of our most requested. And Mr. Hogan might make an appearance at some point. Yes, he will make an appearance at some point. And you can see his class was the most requested class among all of our course requests. Students will let us know their primary request, but they also let us know their secondary request in the event that that is necessary because of a course conflict. So we can look at that data to see where our student interest lies. Per the VDOE High Quality Work-Based Learning Guidelines, we're expanding experiences like job shadowing, internships, and cooperative education. These are connected to student interest and goals, integrated with classroom instruction, and conducted in collaboration with local businesses. And this is something we very much want to expand as part of our local plan. These structured experiences build real-world competencies and increase student career readiness. As Emma said, she has already experienced that in this past summer, for instance, but we like to also have those opportunities even during our students' academic school year. Additionally, we met in the fall with each CTE teacher and initiated one-on-one teacher endorsement reviews to ensure every teacher holds the proper endorsement for the credentials their students are earning. This is critical and essential. If a teacher isn't endorsed appropriately, a student's credential may not be recognized by VDOE and would not fulfill the graduation requirement. And we certainly do not want any student to be in that situation, that they do not have a graduation requirement because of something that we have within our control.
And also, if I may, Ms. Place, my former CTE director.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. It's near and dear to my heart, but also, the High Quality Work-Based Learning Framework is now going to be a major part of the accountability model for public schools. So that's also a reason that it does get a little bit of extra attention, and it all has to be reported and recorded correctly in the information systems. Everything is reported to DOE, and that becomes a part of how schools will be rated. Your high school.
Yes. Thank you. Dr. Grimsley is my mid tour. Whether she wanted to be or not.
It's okay.
Hopefully, you are aware, but I, also, we have created a Career and Technical Education website that is linked through our school website, and we are updating that on a regular basis to include important information pertaining to CTE, the great things that our students are doing. And so I hope that you'll get to visit that. Again, it is being updated very frequently because our CTE program is always doing something and outgoing somewhere and making huge advancements and being noticed. So that is something that's available. That is new. Thank you very much for this opportunity, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Any questions from the board, Career and Technical Education? The local plan is also loaded for your review, the sixty-seven pages that are required to get our seventeen thousand dollars for CTE programming.
I did have a question.
Okay.
The, you talked about the exploration or the one elective period that ninth graders have. Ninth grader. Have you thought about an exploration period for those kids? Where they would take a quarter of this and a quarter of that?
So that is the model we're going to for our eighth-grade students, that they're going to be doing a rotation, so they get to dabble in a lot of different areas.
That would be important to let people know.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, so that will be something new, and I don't know if Dr. Boynton wants to come up too, because this is a recurring child as well. But yes, so for our eighth graders, starting next year, they will be going on a sequence, so they'll get to have opportunities to work in, for instance, Family and Consumer Science. They'll have an opportunity to work with, like, in the shop area. They'll have an opportunity to work in Fine Arts. And then also, for our Technology Plan, they'll have an opportunity to explore some of the digital citizenship requirements that we have. So that'll be a rotation for them. Yes.
If that spurs an interest.
Right.
For enough kids, then you, we could create courses for those kids as ninth, tenth, eleventh graders.
So the courses are all there. The only reason that ninth graders, for instance, have fewer slots is just because of, with the block schedule, having eight. And there's classes they are required to take, just all students in the state of Virginia are required to take. So out of the eight, five of their slots are mandated to be taken. So that just is why they just naturally just don't have as many slots to pick some of the electives. But we want them to also have a good idea, maybe from their experience the year prior, what they might want to start with.
And having those initial-level sequential elective courses is really critical, because then, when you're a junior or senior trying to fulfill those, that sequence in order to meet your grad requirement, you're running out of time and you may have to backtrack. And so it's a much more strategic model to ensure that those sequential electives are protected.
Better start with number one.
Right. Right, and it's also in talking to the teachers, they felt really excited about the option of students would come in with some prerequisite knowledge, because it would allow them to have, be more innovative in what they do as they move up the scale, if you will, into more rigorous courses, because some of those students have a certain amount of, you know, knowledge coming in, and then they can take it from there and move forward. So I think that, not to speak for my teachers, but I think Mrs. Fincham and I, for instance, were talking about that. If she had, students are taking sort of an introductory animal class, and when they go into these courses like Vet Science and Equine Science, she knows what they've already established foundationally, and then she can take it to much further levels.
I suppose we should recognize Mr. Rich Hogan, Professor, welding professor, number one requested.
Yes. Mr. Hogan offers dual enrollment welding. And I, you weren't here, but I said that your welding courses were the number-one requested CTE course. And so, very, very popular. And as a bill program, that's what you see happen. They, they build a reputation, and students talk to each other, and students that might not have normally decided to go into a particular class, they'll hear about it from their peers, and they'll give it a try. And so that's, that's a great thing also. So thank you for being here, Mr. Hogan.
I had a question about the, I like how much more detail there is in that Horticulture slide about, and so where is the course catalog?
So it is linked on our website, the school website and the division website in two different places. You can go into our general program study, which has all of our classes, and there's a hyperlink there to CTE, and then there's also a separate link. So we try to put it in all the different places. It's also on the website for CTE as well.
Yeah, 'cause I remember when we.
So it's under Schools. One way to go about it, and then under School Information. And then you can see Program of Study, and then CTE Program of Study.
Right, so that's where that document is.
Yes.
The progressive model sounds really great. I think we could get really far with that. Thank you for.
Yes, of course.
Any other questions? It's a great document. Thank you so much for all your work, Ms. Place.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the Special Education Plan. So just like Career and Technical Education, every year in April, we also have to review our Special Education Plan. So Dr. Johnson, our Assistant Superintendent and Special Education Director, and many other hats that she wears in the district board, if you could come up and give your presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. And actually, I feel like the lucky blinger, because my, my plan was only twelve pages. And I get a whole lot more money for mine. Makes me feel happy.
Your page revenue is much greater.
So I always like to give you a little overview of what's happening with special education when I come to present the annual plan to you. So this year, for our December one count, we had a hundred and forty-one identified special education students, and that is up from a hundred and thirty in two thousand and twenty-three. However, some of the good news follows. We did have a decreased number of new referrals this year. We had only thirty-seven as compared to forty-nine. So I feel like we're kind of coming, hopefully, out of the COVID piece and kind of stabilizing a little bit as far as our referrals. Thirteen of those referrals were for speech, and last year, we had twenty-six of those. So, you know, again, the children not being isolated, we're seeing less need for the speech service. We also had a decreased number of referrals from private schools this year. We went from ten to five. So that is good news, because we do have to set aside money for our private school students. So we like to see that number stay as low as possible. Right now, we have fifteen students pending eligibility for the rest of this school year versus thirteen from last year at this school time. And then we did have a slight uptick in referrals for outplaced students to private day placements and residentials this year, moving from four to five. So our accomplishments, I'm proud to say that we once again met our results-driven accountability matrix, which is kind of the special education report card that comes out from VDOE each year. We continue to have increased parental involvement. You know, the, as much as I dislike what COVID has done to us, the bringing to us of Zoom has been a tremendous help in involving parents in our, our special education efforts. Expanded opportunities for remediation have been made available, and that, a lot of that has been due to the work of our school division, working on the Virginia-tiered systems of support and our multi-tiered systems of support. We've got so many different initiatives and innovations that can help support student learning now for not just special education students, but for all of the students in the school division, which is what we want to see. You know, our, our special education students now have so many opportunities in addition to their specialized programs. So we're very excited about all of that. We had zero dropouts from the class of two thousand and twenty-three, and then we continue to cultivate community partnerships. The Family Assistance Planning Team, which is part of the county initiative to help to fund special needs services for special needs students. We continue to partner heavily with them for the outplacements. Headwaters continues to be a wonderful supporter. Just one example, this year, they have a donor who likes to support special education students if possible. So this year, we were able to utilize that grant to help to fund a work-study program for a high school student who was very interested in culinary and was a little bit frustrated because he was a senior and wants to graduate, and he wants to be working. So we were able to partner with the school cafeteria and actually be able to give him a monetary supplement for this work experience due to this donation from the Headwaters donor. So I'm very happy with that. And then we are partnering now with Youth for Tomorrow for our mental health services, which is a different agency for us this year. And, and partnering with them, we have a student support specialist who is able to provide support not only for special education students, but all students. So we did have our Special Education Advisory Committee meetings this year, as required. We met four times. Our, our biggest meeting of the year Our, our biggest meeting of the year is always at the beginning of the year where we do a pizza party at the Rappahannock County Park. So that always gives us our best turnout. This year, we had a presentation from Tanya Cox, former employee, on advocating for your child's needs. And we were also able to share a lot of the mental health resources that our school division has been able to acquire through some wonderful grants and share that information with our parents. In November, we had a meeting here with Encompass, which is the former Community Services Board. And they gave a presentation on all of the free services that are available through their organization. Then in January, January, I always like to do a Zoom meeting because you never know what the weather's going to do. So in January, we did a Zoom and we actually had our partners from Inspired Teaching to share activities with our families about how they could build the parent and child relationship. And that was a great meeting. We had several different community members that, that poked in on that. Rachel, I think you were on that one too.
That was great.
Yeah. And then our last meeting, that one's not our most popular. We talked about the approval of the annual plan, so it's a little bit dry. But we did do some planning for Autism Awareness Month in that meeting as well. So I am required to present to you our proposed membership for the Special Education Advisory Committee for next year. There have been no changes in that from previous years. We do have a teacher up to be determined because of staff turnover. So we will be working on filling that. And my most exciting news of the year is that we got to be monitored by the Virginia Department of Education. And we haven't done that for 14 years. And I was so excited when our name came up and I found out it was going to be our turn. Doctor, as I can tell you, I was just doing backflips for y'all. So the initial task in that was to complete a core assessment that included responses to 37 questions, a review of special education student records. And then we were to decide if we were compliant or non-compliant in meeting that. We did this with a division-level team that met several times. So out of the 37 questions, based on what we came up with, we were compliant with 30 of them, which gives me like a 79% average there, which I'd like to do a little bit better than a C, but I'll, you know, I'll take that. The, the people from Virginia Department of Education will have the final say though. So they will be reviewing everything that we submitted and let us know if they agree with our assessment. We also had an onsite visit on March the 18th where they came and visited our classrooms and our teachers. And then parent interviews were conducted by phone last week. So final results of that are to be determined. So the next phase from that, the things that we were not compliant with, we will be assigned a corrective action plan to work on getting those up to par.
Carol, so VDOE did parent interviews?
They did. They asked me to select six parents at random, which I did it as random as I could because, you know, I didn't want to like pick the ones that, you know, I wanted people that I thought would actually communicate with them and have time in their schedule. So yes, and I heard back from a couple of people about those and they said it was, it was good and they felt that the people were very kind and listened to them. So as far as our annual plan request for funding this year, from the biggest part of the funds, which serve all special education students, we had a grand total of 237,986 to work with this year. You can see the breakdown that I provided for you as to what we are requesting. We got an additional $4,000 for the additional special education students we have, which is not a lot, but every little bit helps. And then the set aside portion I did want to bring to your attention, that is what we are required to set aside to serve the private school students. So, you know, again, every little bit helps. And then this last part of the plan deals with the early childhood special education services, which is a very small amount, $6,992. You can see how that was broken out. And we got a whole lot, a whole big $26 more than we did the year before. So that is, we have the plan for your approval for later along with a slate of numbers for the Special Education Advisory Committee. And please feel free to join us April the 24th for our Autism Awareness Walk. And we will follow that the next Friday on the 25th with a visit to Culpeper for the special games to let our students have some fun running and doing other athletic activities. Are there any questions?
The 24th is a Thursday.
Yes, Thursday.
And that's here?
That will be at the walking path at the elementary school.
Any questions for me, Johnson?
I was just wondering, so you said there's some work that needs to be done a little bit about the compliance, the 37. What areas are we looking to?
Most of it is technical, technical pieces of the IEP. So one example that I can give you that has given me a few gray hairs in the last couple of weeks is, is called Indicator 13. So when we do an IEP meeting for a high school student or actually starting at the age of 14, we have to do a section in the IEP that's called the Transition Plan, which talks about what the child wants to do when they graduate from high school. So the technical piece of that is when I, when we do an invitation for that meeting, on the invitation, it has boxes at the top to check for the purpose of discussing the meeting. So every year, we do an annual update to the IEP. So all of our teachers check, yes, we're doing annual IEP. They're also supposed to be checking that they are discussing the transition plan at that annual IEP meeting. And I had a couple of teachers who forgot to check that box. So now I get to, to work on that. So that's an example of the type of thing. If, a lot of it has to do with being sure that you're being compliant with the way that the IEPs are being written and that all of your, your due dates are being met. Which again, I know one area that may hit us this year were some IEP due dates that were a couple of days after what the annual plan was supposed to be. And this occurred during the winter when we were having the bad weather and lots of delays. So, you know, there are things out of our control, but VDOE wants them to be in our control and I will see that. I will control the weather.
You're fierce.
So the checkbox is there, the questions were happening, but it wasn't documented properly.
Correct. So I got to go back through and call all the parents and let them know we forgot to check the box and ask them, could I at least check the box? And, and that, yeah, so that was my documentation and, so yeah, very exciting.
No partial credit?
No partial credit.
All right.
All righty, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
All right, and item 4.3, I'm pleased to welcome Dr. Boynton, our high school principal, to the podium to introduce our Fine Arts Academy launch, which we have been in discussions for several years now in our comprehensive plan.
Sorry, I have guests with me tonight. So good evening, members of the board and guests. As the principal of Rappahannock High School, I am honored to present the launch of an exciting new initiative, the RCPS Arts Academy, a program that reflects our commitment to innovation in education, student engagement and career readiness. I also would like to thank Cecilia Fogg for being with me here tonight. She is very much part of the planning process. So for our agenda items tonight, we are going to look firstly at, tonight I'm going to walk you through the significance of our education, the benefits it provides to students, how the academy aligns with our strategic plan, the curriculum offerings and how we'll engage with our community. And finally, I'll outline how students can enroll. And here are just some, three quotes or other examples of the importance of arts. I think it's, we get hung up sometimes on thinking that there is necessarily going to be a career at the end of a program. And one of the, the true benefits of an art program isn't necessarily the end result of the career. It is very much the skill set and the confidence building and the self-esteem and all of the other very important skills that our students need to be successful. So the importance of our education, particularly for high school students, it, it cultivates some very essential life skills. So through creative, creative expression. So if we look at creativity first of all, generating original ideas and expressing themselves in unique ways. It's very much important for critical thinking, analyzing and interpreting artistic works, build the complex reasoning skills, problem solving, overcoming artistic challenges, teaches adaptability, adaptable thinking, resilience. Students learn to embrace failure as part of growth, preparing them for world-class challenges. And if anybody has ever been part of the arts world, whether it be in theater, music or art, failure is huge. There is a lot of failure that comes along with the process of learning this skill. A growth mindset, students build confidence through continual learning and pushing boundaries. And ultimately, these experiences shape well-rounded, capable individuals ready for college, careers and life. So some other benefits for students, I'm not sure. So a shy student finds their voice in drama. A student struggling with math visualizes concepts through drawing. A student with low self-esteem finds pride and discipline in music or dance. And whether they pursue a career in the arts or apply creative skills to other fields, this academy is going to support every student's journey. So how does it align with our comprehensive plan? So priority two, career preparation and workplace readiness. So at the heart of our academy, our core values such as creativity, collaboration and inclusivity. Our educational philosophy emphasizes hands-on learning, mentorship and the development of critical thinking skills. In alignment, it prioritizes career preparation and workplace readiness. And under strategy one, it was to expand high school academies, one of which was the Fine and Performing Arts Academy. Our mission is not to produce, is not necessarily to produce perfect performances, but to empower lifelong learners who thrive through the process of creating, experimenting and reflecting. And as Jamie Casper says, good arts education is not about the product, it's about the process of learning. So our curriculum offers a lot of breadth and depth across the arts. So we have performing arts, which will be, we are adding theater in next year as well as music and top line structures with abundant opportunities to perform and gain confidence. Under our visual arts, students will explore painting, sculpture, as well as digital media, developing both traditional techniques and innovation, but also tech-based artistry. What is super exciting is that we will also be able to offer special workshops and masterclasses led by industry professionals, many of them who currently live here in Rappahannock. And these sessions provide students with unique insights and practical skills to enhance their artistic practice. So our faculty includes passionate accomplished artists who not only teach, but mentor. Tyler, who is not with us tonight, is because he's actually performing. Erin is not with us tonight because she's currently directing and practicing for our school musical. And they are, and then we also have Cecilia there. So this is our primary team. Okay, so what is really huge and what is so powerful here in Rappahannock is our ability to have community engagement and opportunities. So the Arts Academy is not going to exist in a vacuum, excuse me. Building strong partnerships with local art organizations and offering our students great collaboration. We are going to collaborate with local arts organizations to provide students with real-world experiences. And these partnerships create pathways for students to engage with the arts outside the classroom. We are going to be regularly showcasing our students' work and exhibitions to celebrate their celebrations. And these events allow students to present their work to the community and also gain valuable experience. We're going to offer volunteer and internship programs that provide students with hands-on experience. And these opportunities will also help build their professional networks and gain practical skills. One of the other areas that are going to be very important for us is we have a partnership with RAC. And they are going to be working with us to provide a lot of the internship opportunities for our students where we will actually, hopefully by 12th grade, many of our kids will be able to have actual workplace opportunities or will be able to actually have internships within many of our local artists or our theater and our musicians. So we're super excited to get our students into our own community and being part of that work. So admissions requirements. So it is going to be a program that students have to apply for. And here, our own students here in Rappahannock will not necessarily have to audition. But as we progress, we may determine to require portfolio submissions. We are anticipating having students from beyond the boundaries of Rappahannock apply to our arts program where there will be auditions required for any students who are out of boundary or are coming from homeschool or private. Our own students will be grandfathered in right now, but for anybody who is wanting to come from out with, there will be an audition process for them. So our enrollment is, we will go live tonight with our website and our enrollment will open on April 15th and it will close May 16th. Why such a short window? Particularly because our priority right now is our own students here in Rappahannock High School. And I can tell you right now, Tyler, Erin, Cecilia have already been talking to every single one of them. So it's not going to take much to get their applications in. We will offer rolling admissions by semester. So if we have a student that comes and moves into the area and enrolls in October, they will be able to apply for the academy come January. So we will be rolling per semester to give students the opportunity. And again, they, they may be required to audition if they are not Rappahannock students. And with that, we have the link there for our new website that comes along with our arts program. And it's going to be a two to three-year process to get us fully up and running. We have included all of our course offerings in the program of study, but we do not anticipate offering them all next year because just like CTE, there is a progression that go along with them. We are going to be working with our rising 12th graders though to make sure that they have as much opportunity as possible, even though they won't be able to necessarily take a prerequisite. We don't want them to feel like they are not going to be able to benefit from some of what we are doing. We are also going to be offering AP art history. So we're going to be bringing some AP back into the division, which is very specific to the arts. It's, it's not to move away from dual enrollment, but it's very much, it's much to do with if you want to go into the arts in any shape or form, the AP route is, is the route that we need to go. And with that, if you can't already tell, I'm super, super excited about this opportunity. Arts did me well, so.
Me too. You know what I found when I went to college was that I was missing something in engineering school and I couldn't figure out what it was until I realized there was no music. And I had to figure something out. People don't call you up and say, hey, can you bring over your tuba?
Okay, Jay, I'm with your tuba. So these will be actual courses during school day?
Absolutely.
And you mentioned that, I assume you were. The homeschool kids would be, would be eligible for this?
If they're applying to acceptance, yes.
And of course, all of our enrollment rules would still apply for any maybe non-resident homeschool, any part-time enrollment is all governed by school board policy. All of that would still apply.
It would be a challenge. It would be a challenge for somebody to take full advantage of what we're going to offer through the academy if they only wanted to do it part-time. Because particularly for the 11th and 12th grade, it's potentially going to take up 50% of their options. So therefore, part-time would not work because they wouldn't be able to take a core class.
So as a sophomore, they would have to kind of plan out their three years.
Yes, yes. Yeah, it will be very much part of their care plan.
Interesting. Any other questions?
Yeah, I was wondering how, so students who are, you know, in band, obviously, and parents in this room, how does, so that takes up a significant part of the student's schedule. And so, and like, there's nothing else that fits, is that, is that like a track of the art?
So we have it developed so that there's two tracks. There's the track for the student who just wants to take and wants to try an art class or wants to try theater, but doesn't want to do the Arts Academy. And they are still available for the students. It's the more advanced classes that you have to be part of the Arts Academy to have available to you. So students can still be part of the band, the marching band, even if they do not choose to be part of the Arts Academy.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how it can fit like in a schedule with an advanced diploma or other things.
So for, so it all depends on the planning process. And that's one of the things that Ms. Place and I have worked really hard on for next year, is there's not maybe a whole lot of options for our ninth graders. I mean, there would be one, maybe two. But it's to work with the students to make sure that they are planning appropriately. So by the time they get to 11th grade and 12th grade, similar to our students who do Mount Vista or do any other track, that they have those opportunities available, they have a space available to them.
And those who are specializing in, let's say, band, you have a musical child, they can get the designation of the academy if they take so many classes in the arts. It doesn't have to be super specialized. No, 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 no. So it's this many courses within the arts realm that you took, plus so many of the service hours required performances, those things are spelled out in the model. So similar to our other academies, so it's how many of these experiences have you had? Did you complete this many courses or credits in that area? Did you obtain? In CTE, it'd be a credential certification. In music, it might have been an award or a performance or those types of things. So it looks a little different, but it's the same concept that we've designed every other academy we have.
So you can still vote about this?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. Yeah, we're not, we're not trying to exclude anybody. Because even if a student decides to become part of the Arts Academy, but has absolutely no desire to go to study, it's not going to be taken away from them because they, their internship might be at the, at an art studio, and they might want to be doing marketing, for example. And they'll learn all about how to do marketing within the world of art. So it's just opening other doors for them within the arts world and giving them a lot more opportunities.
Go to the master schedule, like that.
Yeah, no, that's. I'm sorry, I have like two more questions. But I was wondering about, Mr. Grove mentioned with CTE, you know, getting a little taste of it. There's a lot of people who think, oh, I would hate standing up on stage, but actually a lot of more introverted people are great actors, for example. So I'm wondering if that is like that taste of the arts is going to happen for students?
So the arts is part of the exploratory's for eighth grade.
The eighth grade, okay.
We have an introduction to theater. And we also have, we're doing an intermediate band for our eighth and ninth graders. So that now doesn't mean that a great trombonist cannot also be part of the concert band, but there's going to be an intermediate band as well so that we can encourage more students to give it an opportunity. And it's just for one semester rather than them taking up the entire year. So we're trying to invite more students to take that step once they come to high school, particularly eighth and ninth graders.
On that note too, though, if I could add, and maybe Cecilia, you can come up to the podium if you don't mind. But she's helped us out too with some recruitment opportunities and Kelby Sappington as well for our sixth, seventh graders, helping to build that interest, understanding that concept that's coming. And they were part of some of that planning process as well. So how can we do some outreach? And Cecilia actually taught a fine arts class for our middle schoolers at sixth, seventh grade. And there is more planning to allow for those intro courses for sixth, seventh grade as well.
Oh, thank you, Michelle.
So do you want to comment on any of that work? And it's also part of our gifted and talented identification area, which is also super important.
Right. So what would you like to speak on, the fine arts exploratory?
Yeah, the exploratory, and then also how this fits into our local plan for gifted and the identification in EPA.
Awesome. So the fine arts exploratory class happens, you know, some new requirements at the elementary school. And it's been really fun. I created a curriculum based on artists and art history and then going through different art movements and working in the sixth and seventh grade to kind of figure out, you know, what these art movements are. They could look at something and, you know, know that that's Van Gogh, but let's talk about Impressionism and what was happening at the time during society. And then they get to create something similar. And this goes into our gifted and talented visual arts and performing arts model as we help develop future capacity and do more of, less of the pull-out model and build these programming in the classroom to access all children and not just the gifted children. Really get everybody an opportunity to try something new. And like Dr. Boitman was saying, just that exposure and then maybe, you know, they didn't know that it was music that they needed as an engineer, but it was what clicked for them. So.
Excellent.
Yes. Yeah, and that's, that segues into my third question that I had actually. That about, about that, I was, I was wondering about how, because I know that some people experience coming to the high school and say like, well, they're identified in arts and that there's not really a way forward. So it seems like this is being addressed. And then I'm just kind of, the other piece that you were saying about giving more people the opportunity just to experience, both in terms of the audience and in the, and participating. I think that an academy like this could infuse, more students could get the chance to see a play or a performance. And is that a part of the academy, that rather than wanting the individuals, they're also just infusing the school culture?
So like, we've been able to add like film studies. You don't have to be in the Arts Academy to take film studies. You might be really interested in learning and analyzing and talking about all different types of genres of films. We've added craft design. Where literally, if our students just want to take a block and it's accredited class, where literally they can just do crafts. So there's lots of opportunities that are being added, not just for the arts track, but also just for all of our students who might just need that one class for social, emotional, for that, that opportunity to turn off their, turn off their, their math brain or their science brain and just take a moment. Because sometimes it's just, what the arts can offer is just a whole different aspect and just breathe. So we're looking at doing art shows and doing opportunities for like, so coffee hours and any opportunity where the kids, even if they're not in the Arts Academy, can be performing or can be exposed to the work. So we're super excited about it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, sounds great. Thank you.
And I apologize for the yes.
All right, thank you, members of the board. That concludes the information items from Mr. Brant. I didn't have to do very much, did I?
Very exciting. Oh, very exciting. Been looking a long time to get that far. So it's good to see. All right, moving on, a report from Headwaters representative?
I did get a chance to meet with the new Headwaters director. And she'll introduce herself during public comment. And this is a report. With after-school program, the end of your celebration is coming on May 15th. And it's going to be a picnic. The Lions Club is going to be there doing some grilling, and there'll be a magician, perhaps, and other student showcases. The Headwaters enrollment after school didn't jump by 10 people from the beginning to now. And they're looking at ways to get people enrolled earlier on and figure out how to be better, get better with, ahead of the sessions. And then on April 17th, along with me, the after-school group and the National Association is going to be working together to freshen up the paint on the blacktop with the planets or a particular area. We have maps there that are beautiful, and they'll be more bright and beautiful than ever from April 17th. Program I've been working on since my 20-year-old was eight. So, and I love it, it's very exciting. And yeah, and then there, then the enrichment clubs will be completing their year-end projects for the showcase that's upcoming at the end of the year. With Spark Camp, there are 115 campers enrolled, and there are 52 counselors, and there are over 70 workshops and field trips that are planned or in the pending process for the summer. And that's, that's a lot of moving parts. Of course, there's a farm-to-table update that Lacy Jenkins has taken over part of the part, the elementary part of the farm-to-table program to give Mr. Walmer a chance to work more at the high school. And Lacy will be working with another, with Isabel to, together to help get that, the planting going this spring and the courtyard. And the scholarship applications have been reviewed and will be, will be ready for the scholarship award ceremony, which is going to be held on Thursday, April 17th at 1:00 PM in the high school auditorium. I assume we all, it's April 17th. Is that correct?
It's May?
Is it May 17th? It's probably May 17th.
It's April.
It's early.
It's a quick turnaround.
It's early, okay, April 17th.
Just because May 1st is school season day for colleges.
Oh, right.
So, yeah.
Okay, great. That's, that's a great turnaround. All right, and that's what I have. And we had a really great conversation, and I'm just really thrilled that we have as vibrant of a director as Headwaters deserves.
We are blessed. All right, thank you, MBGS.
Fortunately, I wasn't there.
I can give an exciting update from MBGS. The governing board did meet to review plans for next year and making our interim director our full-time permanent director. So, yes, Mrs. Ladonna Goram is the new, she's not new to us because she's been involved since 2006, since the creation of MBGS, the academic advisory board, but she is now the permanent director.
And Mr. Grove had mentioned that there might be coming a discounted fee for people?
Yes.
That happening or not?
So that did happen. So Mount Vista does have contingency funding available to be able to offset tuition increases for school divisions for the upcoming year. So we will be held harmless for the increase for the coming year.
Oh, held harmless.
Yes.
That's the kind of discount we're talking about.
That means that we're a flat line.
Not a discount altogether.
Everything else is going up. The market's going down, everything is going up.
Thanks for the good news. Great. No increase. All right, thank you. At this time, we'll open the Florida public comment. If you want to address the board this evening, I should come and state your name, the district that you hail from, and rise and report.
Hi, I'm Steph Ritter, and I'm in the Wakefield District. And I have two purposes. One, the most important is to introduce our new executive director, Amber Montgomery, who comes to us from Prince William County Public Schools, where she worked, I think, since 2005. And, and better yet, sometime around 2008, I think she married Scott Montgomery, who lives in the county, and she's been in this county since then. The two stepkids who went through the Rappahannock.
Of three, yeah.
Of three, sorry. And she has hit the ground running, as you hear from Rachel's report, because she's been here for less than a month, and it's been just extraordinary. I just am so happy to introduce her.
Do you want me to stand up and say something? Thank you very much, Steph, that was really sweet.
My other is that I'm willing to do anything you need to support total funding for the public school.
We believe you. Hey, Steph, hey, Steph, we believe you.
I'm feeling all the airwork before, apparently.
Hey, you can move the, just move the trolley. You really are excited about it.
I really am. I've got a chance to meet most of you, almost all of you. But yeah, I'm super excited. My background is actually in psychology, that's my undergrad is in psychology, and my master's is in industrial organizational psychology, and I have a certification in HR. So I'm just really, really excited to take over Headwaters and just work in collaboration with Shannon, just to better serve our children. Because, you know, if we're hurting right now, we know that, you know, it's hard, but so whatever we can provide for kids is going to be really, really wonderful. And everybody I've met and talked to has been really, really incredible. So I'm very excited to get started. So, any other questions? I think she's in my mind, thank you, Steph.
You're welcome. It's a great organization to head up.
It's a phenomenal organization.
We've had a great relationship for many years. So welcome.
Thank you so much. Sorry.
Who wants to follow that? Anybody? Ross, yes, go.
Good evening, Dana Dawson, the Jackson District. So even though I don't have any kids still in Rappahannock schools, without our schools, then we wouldn't have any progress in the county. So I just had a couple of questions, actually, instead of comments, if that's okay. In regards to the Fine Arts Academy, I know Dr. Boynton had mentioned that it would be open to out-of-boundary students. Could we give a better explanation of who that would be?
After public comment, I'm happy to clarify.
Okay. So then with that answer, may provide the answer to my next question. I know in the last school board meeting, the budget conversation that no one likes to have, but one of the requests from, in front of the school board, was for three additional teaching positions, one of which was named as the Fine Arts Academy instructor, which would be a full-time position. So I'm just wondering if all of the other academies, such as the Health Sciences Academy, the Agriculture Academy, the Trades Academy, are those also open to out-of-boundary students? And if not, why not? Why are we opening just the fine arts to out-of-boundary? And then if we are going to accept out-of-boundary students for the Fine Arts Academy, is there going to be some sort of monetary income to fund for this new Fine Arts Academy instructor that has been asked to be funded? So that may answer that question. One other question I did have is, it was also mentioned by Dr. Boynton that the Fine Arts Academy students would have the volunteer and internship opportunities in the community. That is great. It's getting the kids to know the community members and vice versa. I'm also wondering, is that also open to the other academies, the trades and all of that? Do they have the same options as that? That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
So Donna Comer-Jackson, and I actually had not planned to speak, so I don't have anything prepared. From personal experience, I first want to thank you all so much for what you do. I know it is probably at times very thankless, so that's why I'm thanking you here tonight. The next thing, I just want to, again, thank you and teachers. My son is a junior, and Rappahannock County Public Schools has served him very well. He has been afforded many opportunities that I am convinced he would not have been afforded in any other school district, such as Mount Vista Governor's School, all of the athletics that he participates in, and all of the groups, the clubs and whatnot. With all of that said, I want to also speak about some of your students that I engage with on a professional level. So I definitely want to be clear that I'm here wearing my parent hat and my full-time Laurel Ridge hat. The students that I have engaged with over many years now, I guess since 2020, at Laurel Ridge, coming from Rappahannock County Public Schools, by far outdo all of the county, the neighboring county kids in manners, in how they interact with. in manners, um, in how they interact with us. I know for maybe some of the regular teachers, they might think, gosh, how do you get so lucky? But, um, but they do. They come, they are always the only kids with resumes prepared. They are, um, generally very well-spoken. They generally look us in the eye, and they can speak with adults. I'm convinced that that is a direct result of the, um, focus that our school system has put on career readiness. And I hope that, um, I welcome all of the new things that I see happening, but I hope that there is no backside in the concentration on CTE and the trades over, you know, as we embark in this, this new area, because there is such a great shortage of the skilled trades, um, laborers in our area and our state and our nation. And I can tell you from personal experience, I watched it. I work with CTE directors, guidance counselors, principals from Faukeer County Public Schools, from Shenandoah Public Counties, uh, Shenandoah County Schools and, and beyond. And Rappahannock is, was leading the charge with that. They were really leading the charge. An example I will give you, right now in the plumbing trades academy, we only have 11 students. Seven of them are from Faukeer County Public Schools, and four of them are from Rappahannock. So, to some, you might hear four and seven, that's not a lot. I'm going to break that down percentage-wise. So, how many kids are in the, the graduating class in Rappahannock? Compare that to four schools in Faukeer County, and Rappahannock sent four. So, I just, as a parent and as someone out there talking to employers on a daily basis, I really, really hope that, um, we don't, we, we don't experience any backside, because the, the work that we are doing is important, and, um, it's reflective of our community needs and desires. So, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Grove, parent. Leader at Laurel Ridge. Yes, ma'am.
Betsy Deedle with Wakefield. I, I know you all have been working very hard for the last couple of months, and that the, the upcoming, um, public hearing is, um, going to not be an easy conversation. There are a group of us who are going to try and get as many people out as possible, because we think it's really critical that particularly the Board of Supervisors understand that there is a lot of support for even more than what, um, they are currently proposing, which is a two-cent increase. And for this board, I would love, next time, if we could figure out some way to schedule the public hearing on a night which isn't the night after Easter weekend and the beginning of the school vacation, because it will really affect how people think about coming out for a public meeting. And so, just as a, an addendum, as you're sort of noting things for next year, please, I don't know what your power is for scheduling things like that, but I think it really does impact how we get, how many, particularly how many parents we get out. And I think the Board of Supervisors and the public need to hear from, from the parents. And just as a second comment, I think this arts academy is fabulous. My recollection is that one of the positions, um, in the budget is for the arts academy. Is that correct? So, just for the record, um, that's another reason why we really need to get, uh, the kind of budget agreement that you all presented, um, a couple of weeks ago. And I just think what you're doing is great, um, and we need more people to know about it.
Thank you, Ms. Deedle. Is there anyone else?
I want you to know it's the Mount Hawthorne area, and I'm going to put on my PTO hat eventually, but first I want to put on my parent hat and thank you guys all for going for, um, increasing the, the budget for our, our teachers and to fight for our schools here with, um, we obviously have some awesome people behind us and some awesome people in front of us, and it's just amazing. I have two graduates and three that are still coming up. And I agree that the opportunities afforded in here at RCPS are things that people blow. Everybody else is mine, and I tell them what kind of things we have here and what kind of opportunities. So, thank you for your hard work, and please keep it up. Along that route, I'm going to put my PTO hat on and announce that, um, maybe I'll get a spot on that agenda eventually sometime with a PTO rep or something. But, um, we just completed our fund run last week. Last Thursday was our fund run that we actually did, which is our biggest fundraiser of the year, and we raised $41,000 between both schools. The first grade at RCES brought in on close to $7,000, and so did the high school in total. So, um, we had a little bit disproportionate, but we've also trained the elementary school for six shares how to do this, so. And their parents. So, we wanted to thank, first off, thank everybody that, that supported that, and especially want to thank some of the teachers over here that have brought their students out. And they're obviously some of the most highly-ranked teachers. And I wanted to point out that that's also, not just because of the subject they teach, but how much they care about the students and how much their energy has gone into forming relationships, and how important that is. And that really showed in our fund run, where we had the high schoolers interact with elementary kids. And it also brought out a lot of community members. We've got great conversations going on with other community members that want to bring in and jump into what we're working on. It brings awareness and interest to our schools and lets people know we're doing things here, and we care about it in our whole community. We had, I believe, over 700 donors that went into that amount of money. So, it's, um, it's online, so it's a lot of different stuff. But, um, we are going to work on the courtyard along with the elementary school. We'll be getting, um, a rock climbing wall and a gaga pit and a, um, big mural, an art installation. So, thank you for all who was involved, and we had the whole theme of unity, and I think it really came across. You can see in those shirts we left you guys up there. We have every single, um, teacher and student and staff names on the backs of those shirts, which was a bear to do, but we had some awesome people that worked on that also. So, I wanted to thank everybody as a, with my PTO hat and also as a parent hat for making the schools the awesome place that we have to raise our children.
It's $41,000. That is ridiculous. We're going to give the other school districts, like, PTO envyers.
I just want to point out, that's only through, from parents and families. That's not from businesses. I mean, there were a few businesses that supported a child, but we also have other money coming in from businesses and community donors.
Fantastic. Great. Anyone else this evening?
Hi, I'm Lisa Crocker, Wakefield District. And I, um, I'm getting my public service flak jacket out of retirement for this budget. And, um, like Stephanie Ritter, I would be glad to do anything. And I'd love to actually hear from any of you individually. I'll meet with you. What can we really be doing for the hearing on the 21st? I think a lot of people are not really cognizant of the, um, vulnerabilities. And it, it takes a lot to get up to speed, really understand all the interrelated issues. I feel like we've been fighting this battle for a very long time, and I know how disappointing it was not to get the, to have success with the legislative relief. We're going to have to go at that again. So, uh, what can we do as citizens to support you very specifically? I personally think that we should go for, I think we should be requesting full funding. And I, and I understand the, uh, the, um, again, the vulnerabilities there, but, uh, from my point of view, this school system has been chronically underfunded for a very long time. And I would hope that this community would rally to really, you know, I don't want to say fight, but yeah, let's, let's fight for this. And I know how difficult here it is, but, uh, yeah. You, you cannot, you cannot achieve the road of remarkable in a premier public school system in a rural setting. Is that what it is? With chronic underfunding, you just can't. And it's really all about the staff and primarily, that's really it. And that's, you know, we know that that is really where the resources are required. I'm so sorry, you have to deal with an 18% hike in health insurance. I mean, that's just crazy. So, I don't know what we can do about that, but, um, people need to understand those particulars if you want them to, um, speak up for what needs to happen and help my good friend, Mrs. Comer, and others on the Board of Supervisors to, to take the bold action that will be required to really, to bring in the funding that would more nearly, um, meet your original request, which was about a million plus, as I recall. And, and the advertised budget already removes more than half of that. So, I'm not sure a lot of people understand that, but what that hearing is going to be about is, will it, will, will even that be supported? And the consequences could be pretty painful if it is not. So, thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Ms. Crocker. Chronic underfunding, I love that phrase. I need to remember that phrase. It is chronic.
And, yeah, I'm going to take a little bit different tact. I think that nobody is going to disagree that the focus is on the kids and development of the kids and the opportunity of the kids, and how well we've been doing. As Supervisor Comer has justified, and a lot of other people have justified. But I was thinking today, uh, when talking to our budget request and between the students, and of course, that is a very broad value to the entire community, both short-term and long-term. But I think in a weird kind of way, the schools can be seen as taking and not giving. And I think in many ways, the schools actually are, um, it's sort of the heart of the community. There's not many places where so many, um, different kinds of people cross paths, and so many different kinds of people are encouraged, students and parents and, and others are encouraged to actually learn something, have a new experience, share something with somebody else. But even beyond that, just really in practical ways, look at all the things a school does. It's a meeting space. It's the only big meeting space in the county, really, right? There aren't several programs in the school that actually serve not just students and staff and teachers. You think about Commit to be Fit, that's open to the entire community. You think about the health clinic that is now reaching out to seniors, right? Um, and there are other examples as well. So, in a way, investing in the schools is not just investing in the students and the teachers in a narrow sense. It's actually allowing the schools to provide some opportunities and services to people far beyond the classroom and far beyond the playing field and that sort of thing. So, I, I would encourage you not to underplay that aspect of the schools in the budget discussions that are, that will be coming up. I really do think that, um, there are so many other ways, in addition to the educational ones that we all recognize, that the school, school system, school facilities, whatever, actually support the community and make them a kind of a beating heart for the community. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you. It's a great crowd. I, uh, I wanted you to know that there is a document that the board keeps called Norms and Protocols, and it's on our website. It's good for you to, to know. It is a document that might seem constraining, uh, because it tells us how to behave as board members. And, uh, helps us organize a meeting so that we're not in a, uh, town hall type of forum that could go on all that. So, those norms and protocols basically constrain us to make sure we're not in a conversation with you during public comment. That's what, that's what, uh, one of the items in there is all about. And actually, if we do engage you, it's punishable offense. We haven't figured out what the punishment is. It's not favorable. Not something you won't, you won't even.
You get a bad look from Dr. Grimsley.
However, it is, it is good to hear your questions so that we can clear things up as quickly as possible. And if we're able to do it, we're very informal here. We are able to do that. If it's something reasonable to give an answer to. So, Ms. Dotson had asked a couple of questions. I think you had something to respond to that.
Sure. If this is appropriate, it could be, this is fine. So, there was a, a really good question about the, um, out-of-boundary students. I just want to be sure that we are saying this is not a new concept. Our policy is still the same way. We talked about if there is room in a grade level, if there is a seat open for a classroom that you're paying for an instructor already, that empty seat is lost revenue from the state, right? So, any year, out-of-county residents in any program, trades, first grade, preschool, can apply to come as long as we have room. Principal gets to review the, uh, standing of the student. They must be in good standing. And they have to apply every year. Uh, so those standards are still not just unique to fine arts. That's been the case with our, uh, non-resident tuition waiver process. And you can either, if you apply for a waiver for your tuition, otherwise you're paying tuition. So, it can be a revenue generator as well. It's for, um, and that came out of, uh, some of our SIFT work, the School Innovative Finance Task Force. That said, the only real variable that we have any influence over in our funding formula really is our average daily membership. That's the only thing we can really impact. And the way you impact that is, one, have the best schools you can and attract people to come and move here. If they can't move here, they want to come here for other reasons, like the arts, like the trades, like, uh, the athletics, teams, everything we have going on, and of course, our amazing academics. Uh, so, those are the things that you want to attract, but, uh, it is an application process. Uh, homeschool is a little bit different if they want to do part-time enrollment, but that's all governed by policy. That policy has always been in place. So, I just want to clarify that. There was a question about budget. Yes, our original proposal does have the addition of three positions, one of which is one that we put back in that we removed several years ago. Remember, we had an assistant band director position, and a bigger crowd than this came out and bought us on that, but we didn't have the numbers at the time. So, it's one that had been removed that we're putting back in. The interest is now generated enough in the overall arts. However, county administration has proposed a budget that has cut us $560,000. There are going to be no new positions with that amount of a cut, no matter what it is, even trying to refill, uh, natural attrition. There won't be any new positions. We would have to do a hiring freeze and perhaps cut down some, uh, those who leave us. So, I do want to clarify that. I mean, that was our, what we proposed. Yes, that's what we would like to do to achieve the road to remarkable goals. Uh, but with a, uh, over a half a million dollar cut, no, we won't be adding any positions.
Right. Thank you for clarifying. Dr. Grimsley?
Yes.
Yeah, it's good to know what we're, what we're actually debating when we go on 421. 421 is the, uh, is the date of, it's a Monday night at the courthouse for the public hearing on budget with supervisors.
It's going to be at the courthouse?
It's at the courthouse, I recall, and it's at 7:00, I recall.
Yes.
And, uh, those dates, by the way, that, uh, for those meetings are managed by the supervisors. All right, thanks for clarifying that. So, at this time, we'll move on to information items. Mr. Ruben and I are on the policy committee. We received these updates, uh, weeks ago. We reviewed them. They're in the, uh, action items for this evening in case anybody has any comments about them. Give any comments about them? They were updates, red lines, uh, nothing of, uh, importance. Just updates. So, is everybody okay with that? Any questions, honey? All right, moving on to action items. Is there a motion to approve the CTE local plan as it was presented this evening? We have a motion from Mr. Grove.
Second.
Second, Mr. Ruben. Any comments? Well done, Jody. Well done. All in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no? This order is their motion to approve the sped plan as it was presented this evening. Motion, Mr. Ruben. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Cool. Is there any comment? All in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no? This order. Is there a motion to approve the policy updates?
Seven.
A motion, Ms. Bynum, is there a second?
Second.
Second, from Ms. Ruben, is there any comment? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Miss order. All right, moving on to new business. Mr. Grove?
I do have something. I wrote it down, so I'm gonna be official. And as some of you know, I recently had a pretty serious health scare. I'm on a good road to recovery, however, based on discussions with my family, my doctors, and based on the fact that I'm 81 today, I've decided not to run for a third term. I'm announcing this now to encourage others to consider running for a school board representative, the Stone Malhoffland. I'd be happy to talk to anyone who has that interest. I want to thank the residents of my district for their faith in me, their support, and their willingness to reach out with ideas and questions. I look forward to continuing throughout the remainder of this year and advocating for the kids in the best interest of our county. That's that.
Thank you, Mr. Grove. We wish you well as you heal and...
I'm gonna be all right.
You're gonna be all right.
We know.
But it is, it would be helpful to equip our community as we head into the public hearing if our board members have ideas on how we can best do that and how we can best equip those that are curious about wanting to advocate. It's good to be able to, to do that as a board member.
If we could come up with some kind of a strategy or, you know, sure, because I think we have the budget as it was.
We are now the safest country in the world. We have the highest rates of usage in the world. But my uncle is trans...
Yeah, so, you know. It's funny you should say that. So, the group that is working on a strategy for advocating, we have set up some templates, talking points, some ideas, if you're a parent, a teacher, ways that you can help advocate. So, anyone interested, you can contact me if you'd like, or Betsy Deedle, she got up and talked about that, organizing some of that. But we do have some of those documents together and some useful, yeah, just some useful tools that people may want to use. Yeah, I mean, it just, it just struck me that Ms. Janau mentioned how many people just donated to our schools, and I don't know if there's a way that there could be a call-out to, we could talk about this another time, but people who have recently engaged in supporting our schools might be interested to know of ways to further support.
Well, we're, we're running out of time, so...
I attribute advocate to have it in the article.
I mean, it's not a reading.
It's advertised at this point, but it has happened before.
Yeah, it happened two years ago.
Where the crowd, it did, where a lot of people did come out and they had to make a menu change based on that. But again, like somebody did say, it is difficult on the Monday after Easter, also spring break, to have a lot of our school families' voices heard, so we just want to let people know that there are opportunities. You can talk to a supervisor, you can call them, you can email them, write a letter. There's a lot of ways to reach out and just say, even if it's just to say, hey, we love our schools, can you please support them? You know, the more they hear from, from people, the better.
I would also say not to, I think we, have we actually missed the vote on the whole general assembly, the idea that we might get any help at all?
I mean, at the point that it's in now, the general assembly went through amendments and...
And the governor didn't add it back in.
So, he hasn't told May 2nd to make some decisions, but it doesn't look great for us at this stage.
Right, right, right. But it's, it's good to also voice our opinions still with those that are voting to disregard the chronic inequity with, of funds to our county. You know, I, I looked at, this is something actually that Mr. Curry put together, it was a spreadsheet that he shared, and I was looking at it today, just based on what we get from the state, we, I panic, what we get from the state per student is about $2,000 per student. Faukeer County gets twice that per student. Now, Madison County gets two and a half times that per student. Shenandoah County gets three times that. Culpeper County gets three times that. Page County gets three and a half times what we're getting from the state per student. It's just good to remember that it is chronic, and right now, it is 18 years old. This impediment that's keeping us in, clearly, the cap, the cap is keeping us in that mode. And so, where we might hear at the general assembly feels that rural Virginia and education are important to them, we are not experiencing either of those here.
I guess that I would also add that at this point, we know very clearly that we're not gonna have, like, if, where are the people we're waiting for, like, to, to fund ourselves, to fund our schools? So, I agree and share in your disappointment about the chronic underfunding from the state, but we're, we are chronically underfunded, and what we can do is really advocate for local funding, because that's what we have, that's the only card we have left to play. You know, that, that's what, I mean, we don't have...
It's all we have.
And you're, I know that you're aware of that, but I think that that's where we are at this point to, because I do think that we're at a, almost like a cusp of, with the building of, we're on an upswing in terms of ABM, and if we put, I think that the real investment is in our schools, that we can get the state funding, the per pupil state funding that we can get much more easily than being such a tiny voice in the large state of Virginia. And, you know, that's, that's my, that's, that's the view that I have. I was more optimistic earlier.
Me too, I was.
We were also optimistic. We went to Richmond and we had good conversations. At this point, we're in this, it's real, you know, it's, it's real, and we have these exciting plans of...
But I tend to think also that this idea of equipping people to make an argument, I mean, it's good to be able to delineate the things that the board will not be able to do, that we plan to do if we don't get the funding that we requested. It was requirements-based delivery that we made to the supervisors. So, it's good for the supervisor to be aware that, you know, if they were able to add 100,000 to the ask, or to, if they're willing to give us, we would then be able to do...
X, Y, Z.
X, Y, Z, or, or to, to give them some type of incremental statement. So, when I have to do a budget, I have to say, in my organization, I have to say, okay, if you cut me 5%, you're gonna lose this. You cut me 10%, you're gonna lose this and this, if you lose, and so, they make me go through this drill of what, what they lose if they cut me certain amounts, and they decide their pain threshold at that point. And so, it's almost, we're almost at that point because this, this 560 number, it's out there, right? And we know what we originally gave them was like 90, 970 or something. It was a large number. So, it might be good for the educational materials that we try to help people get out there is to say, here's what is going to be taken away in this measured fashion, because we have to make those choices regardless. We might as well say, here's, here's where it's gonna come from, and make sure everybody's comfortable with it, and...
Well, I think that's important to say at this juncture too, because before the hearing, after you have an appropriation from your supervisors, you will have a work session to determine what to do with whatever they give it. Now, with a school budget that's mostly personnel, a half a million dollar cut is only personnel. I mean, that's where it's going to hit. We're dealing with an 18% health insurance increase, so you're gonna have to make choices. Is it more important to really try to protect benefits and your salary increases and eliminate some positions? Are we gonna try through natural attrition and hope? That's always the best case because we always try to protect people and programs first. That's the tier, but as you, as you move through, it's, okay, we want to protect our benefits the way it is in our program, so we need to eliminate positions. And the way a reduction in force works in education is different than in the private sector. So, I want people to understand that too. You have excited new teachers you've hired on, maybe as provisional certified, came on board, they're under a conditional contract until three years, but when they become a tenured contract, they're the ones first that have to be reviewed unless there's a performance issue with more veteran teachers. So, people that think you're going to save all this money by cutting, you're actually looking at some of your least expensive new hires who are excited coming in first for a reduction in force. So, that can really hurt your program, I think, when you think about it, because you've just recruited these people and hired them on, so come on. We try to be very innovative in how we recruit people. A great CTE example, Kat Waters' program with EMR, she had seven students sign up in one year to volunteer in fire and rescue, seven. Huge benefit to the community. We're working with fire and rescue, we're trying to figure out a funding stream, just applied for a grant to try to fund that adjunct role. It's not a full-time position for us, but it's adjunct to offer those positions. So, we're trying to figure out as creatively as we can, but your full-time positions do, you know, you're looking at about 70, 75,000 per position when you figure in full-time benefits, FICA, all the things that go with it. So, it doesn't take much to, you know, 560,000, you're looking at about five people.
That's where the money is.
Okay. Good conversation. We have a week to get our act together. And, I mean, really though, it's, it's tough, it's uphill. Once, once the administrator has proposed some options, and that budget is complicated, it's multi-passed it, and everybody's coming to the same water hole, right, for water. So, we appreciate the work, and it's a hard job, so we have to make sure that they know exactly what the perspective of the public is, right? Because this is the public's school. It's the public's roof on the elementary school. It's the public's programs, the public's facilities and, and young people, so...
Public's future.
Yeah. So, I mean, it reflects, all of it reflects on us as a community, so, so it's good to reiterate and remind ourselves of what it is, this organization. Is there anything else on our new business tonight? Or we beat, we don't want to beat on the horse, right? Anything else? No. Are there any requests for future agenda items this evening?
I'd be interested to hear about the Ag Academy more, I mean, like the Heart Culture and, I said, Farming Table more specifically, that piece of the end.
Thanks. Anything else, anybody? Our next regularly scheduled school board meeting is May the 13th in this very same location, 6:30 PM. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move the board to convene in closed session for the following purposes. Discuss and consider the resignation of a classified physician, consider the appointment of coaching physicians, and hearing of a dismissal appeal for a professional physician pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ruben, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Miss order, we're gonna be leaving the room, we're gonna be back in, I'm gonna say, 40, 45 minutes, if you want to hang out. If you don't understand, then have a great night, and if you're curious about what the motions were, you can always contact the board office in the morning.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Larry. Happy birthday to you.